Half a day and good morning. The Committee on Health, Land, Justice and Culture is now called to order. Today's Tuesday, October 1st, 2024. The time is about 9:05 a.m. In compliance with the open government law, notice for this public hearing was published in the Guam Daily Post and posted to the government of Guam Public Notice Portal on Tuesday, September 24 and Sunday, September 29, 2024. Notice was also sent by email to all senators and all main media broadcasting outlets. This hearing is being livestreamed on the Guam Legislature's YouTube channel. I ask that individuals who are testifying first state your name, and if you are representing an entity, please state that as well, and we will be transcribing these proceedings. So we'd like to be clear who's speaking, so we'll just make sure to take turns, please. We have one agenda item this morning that is Bill Number 356-37COR, introduced by myself, Therese M. Terlahe. It's an act to amend the Guam Board of Allied Health Examiners Administrative Rules and Regulations relative to including licensed professional counselors as clinical supervisors. I'd like to acknowledge the presence of Senator Telotai Tukui with me this morning. Thank you, Senator. And so as primary sponsor of the bill, I'm going to just give a very brief introduction of it. This bill was introduced at the request of constituents from the behavioral health community who expressed concern about the recent changes to the administrative rules and regulations of the Guam Board of Allied Health Examiners. These new rules excluded licensed professional counselors from supervising clinical hours, which contradicts the provisions outlined in the statute, 10 GCA Section 121301. So this section defines the educational and professional requirements for LPCs as established by Public Law 32-54, and it states, quote, "To provide such supervision in Guam, a person must be a licensed individual marriage and family therapist, licensed professional counselor, marriage and family therapist, or licensed clinical social worker licensed in Guam, who has held a license for a minimum of five years, or a clinical psychologist or psychiatrist licensed in Guam who has held a license for a minimum of three years." That's the statute. But in December 2022, Public Law 36-138 lapsed into law, new rules and regulations for the Guam Board of Allied Health Examiners, which did not include licensed professional counselors in the list of eligible professionals who can provide clinical supervision. As a result of this change, aspiring LPCs, or licensed professional counselors, who had already begun accumulating clinical hours under LPC supervision, are now being told by the board that their hours are void despite having started the process before the new rules and regulations took effect. The situation has caused significant setbacks for those in the process of becoming licensed LPCs, which is why this bill is aimed to rectify that oversight and restore the ability of LPCs to supervise clinical hours. The committee has also received a fiscal note waiver from the Bureau of Budget and Management Research advising that the Bill 356 is administrative in nature and poses no fiscal impact upon any funds of the government of Guam. All right, we're now going to receive oral testimony, and I see the chairperson of the Guam Board of Allied Health Examiners is here. You're welcome, Dr. Mamie Balajah, to come to testify. We also have with us Jamela Santos, Andrea Santos, Armin Sablan, Jolene Baza. If there's anyone else who would like to present testimony who's not signed up, you're welcome to come to the table as well. All right, we did also receive written testimony on this bill from Jolene Baza, so thank you for that in advance. That's been distributed to my colleagues, and Melissa Lepojovic, that's also testimony, and Dr. Alan Butler. All right, we'll now hear from Dr. Balajah. Would you like to proceed?
This one. Good morning, Madam Speaker, and good morning, Senator Telotai Tukui. You have a copy of the, I gave it to your staff to be duplicated. Do you have it?
Yes, we did. Oh, sorry. I should have included that on the list. We also did receive testimony from the chairperson of Guam Board Allied Health.
Thank you. Usually I don't like to read, I just wanted to present, but I think there's a lot of things in this particular aspect important, so I'm just going to read out of my testimony, okay? Morning, Madam Speaker and members of the Committee on Health, and particularly Senator Tukui. It is a privilege and honor to appear before you and distinguished members of the Committee of Health today. As your Guam licensed clinical psychologist and chair of the Guam Board Allied Health Examiners, I'm in support of the subject bill, but with the following amendment on the role and duty of a clinical supervisor overseeing counselors or therapists. Under Section 10407, Supervision by Clinical Psychologist Licensed Professional Counselors, Licensed Mental Health Counselors, and Marriage and Family Therapists, and this is in the rules and regulations, proposing adding the following to D1, the clinical supervisor qualification. And I'm taking this out of the national standards. To qualify as approved supervisor, the supervisor candidate must have completed the following. One is the clinical supervision training constituting either minimum 15 clock hours of graduate-level supervision coursework in clinical supervision, or two, a minimum of 15 hours of continuing education training credits on clinical supervision, or three, designated as an approved supervisor by the National Board of Certified Counselor Center for Credentialing and Education, or the American Association of Marriage and Family Therapy. B, graduate coursework or continuing education trainings must include the following. Become familiar with the major models of supervision for mental health counseling or marriage and family therapy. Two, gain skills to develop a personal model of supervision drawn from existing models of supervision and from preferred styles of therapy. Three, understand the co-evolving dynamics of therapist-client and supervisor-therapist-client Four, explore distinctive issues that arise in supervision. Five, address the contextual variables in practice such as culture, gender, ethnicity, power, and economics. And six, be familiar with the ethical, legal, and regulatory issues of supervision. Seven, review the Guam laws and the board rules governing interns and supervision. And eight, understand the role of evaluation in supervision. Additionally, 25 hours of experience in supervision of clinical practice, and has five years of clinical experience post licensure. Submit and file with the board a copy of the supervisor-supervisee contract. Also, the approved supervisor must not be a blood or legal relative or cohabitant of the licensure candidate or someone who has acted as the licensure candidate's therapist within the past two years. Also, I want to add that under Section 10408, Licensed Professional Counselor, at the following, the Licensed Professional Counselor must acquire the required clinical hours in no less than two years and not more than four-year period once commenced. We appreciate your attention and consideration on the role, duty, and responsibility of a clinical supervisor in the counseling profession. Thank you. Let me add also that a group of us earlier before this bill were to introduce, namely, Nadine Sepeda, Dr. Cooper Nurse from Behavioral Health, Nadine Sepeda representing the board as well as DOE, Melissa Casil representing the court, Family Counseling Center, and also Mr. Vince Peretta representing the board. We met and we discussed the particular aspects of what is a clinical supervisor, and I must give credit to Dr. Cooper Nurse, who really provided and researched the area of what is a clinical supervision relative to what is presented in the national requirement. And so I cannot take credit for the body at all, but we got together and discussed the particulars related to clinical supervision. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Balajah. So can you just tell me again, this is, you're saying, coming from some national standards? Where does this come from?
Yeah, we're looking at the different aspect, yeah, the national standards in the different states, and this particular aspect was taken. This is a just simple requirement on the national standards, and we don't want just to have add on to clinical supervision in our rules and regs, but we wanted to lay out the requirement, what is required of a clinical supervisor. The power of this clinical supervisor is greatly affect, you know, who we are, and I think once I've told different groups, you know, you are who you are.
All right, Dr. Balajah, this, the way that you're suggesting it, is going to apply to all of the already listed in the rules categories such as clinical psychologists, psychiatrists, clinical psychologists, licensed mental health counselors, marriage and family therapists, and now in this bill's pass, the licensed professional counselors, they all have to abide by these?
Clinical psychologists, psychiatrists, you know, and marriage and family therapists, mental health counselor, they all have the different requirement and standards, but we're talking about licensed professional counselor that was left out. So we're proposing that this is a requirement. In order for you to be a supervisor, you need to have the background and the education and training in order to become one, and not just because you got a license today and tomorrow, you know, let's say for five years, that was the requirement, yeah.
Okay, but the way it's written, it's going to apply to all of them, and you're saying some of these already have their own standards, for example, one, well?
Yeah, I'm, we're proposing that that applies to licensed professional counselors.
All right, so in 10407A, and sorry, B, says the following rules apply to all supervisory relationships. That's B, right?
I'm sorry.
10407B has already a list of rules that apply to all supervisory relationships.
I think in a way, the graduate coursework, I think if you are licensed as a family therapist or a mental health counselor, that applies, but this is particular, I'm looking, we're talking about the licensed professional counselor.
All right, so you want this to, these criteria to apply only to licensed professional counselors?
Yeah, this is the topic, yes, we're talking about.
You said that the others are already governed by certain rules. Where do I find those? Like, what is the supervisory rules similar to this or qualifications for another category such as clinical psychologists?
Clinical psychologists, you have to have a doctorate in order to be licensed.
You have to have a what?
You have to have a doctorate degree before you can be licensed on Guam, right? So we're talking about someone, you can be licensed as a licensed professional counselor once you get a graduate degree, that is a master's degree.
But where does it say that? I'm asking you, there are rules here that apply to everybody, but I don't see rules that apply for supervision by any other categories in particular.
Speaker, I am not familiar with the numbering and, you know, the aspect of putting things in rules as well as the law, so that can be worked out in number system.
What do you currently, do you have rules that you apply for everybody who is applying to be a supervisor?
There is no such category as being a supervisor, right? In the law and in the rules currently.
All right.
But in the profession that we're in right now of counselors and therapists, in the background, there are rules concerning, for example, when you go through coursework. You may have courses in supervision, but when you're licensed and in the area, then you need to have, be conscious, conscientious of the role of a clinical supervisor. That's why I'm going back and I repeat myself, who you are depending on who your supervisor is. So if someone is licensed, LPC being licensed already, and they don't have the background, and they're there to open an office and not regulate it, but this thing is going to help them to become better as a counselor and therapist to serve the public.
Should this apply to everybody, all the categories?
But remember, we have different credentialing concerning.
What about the rule, like, you're proposing?
I think this could be worked out in how we can work in the new rules and regs and how it's going to be applicable to different professions, but remember that mental health counselor and marriage and family therapist, they have to go through also credentialing before they can be licensed. They have to take the exam as well. LPC is the beginning, the basic of providing therapeutic alliances with individuals seeking assistance and help. So depending on the level of education and level of experience and the level of training that one receives, so if we set this as a standard, it could be, but LPC is the beginning of providing service to the public.
All right. Bye. Thank you. Thank you. We'll go next to Jamela Santos.
Good morning. Buenos dias, Speaker Terlahe and to Senator Tukui, thank you. Thank you for allowing us the opportunity to speak before this body in support of Bill My name is Jamela Santos. I have been a licensed professional counselor under the Guam Board of Allied Health Examiners since 2015, and prior to that, under the previous license of individual marriage and family therapist since 2012. I am a dual license holder with the Guam Health Professional Licensing Office, as I am also a licensed clinical social worker by exception under the Guam Board of Social Workers. As I understand it, Bill 356-37 is intended to correct a purported error in the rules outlined in Public Law 36-138, adopted into law in December 2022, that omits licensed professional counselors as eligible clinical supervisors for any LPC applicant. This is an error that even the Guam Board of Allied Health Examiners has recognized and admitted during their last board meeting on the 6th of September. Of all of the licensed providers on Guam who are qualified and authorized to provide behavioral or mental health counseling, LPCs significantly outnumber all of the other licenses at this time, so those licenses being marriage and family therapists, mental health counselors, clinical social workers, clinical psychologists, and psychiatrists. Excluding LPCs as eligible clinical supervisors for those who wish to apply for the LPC license serves no purpose. Excluding LPCs as eligible clinical supervisors will have a profound and detrimental impact on our community on multiple levels. First, it will further exacerbate the existing critical shortage of licensed behavioral health providers. Second, and most startling, is the ripple effect that it will have on the people who need treatment and care. We know that the need for mental health services on this island and across the nation is surging at an alarming rate. Imagine a law and rules that make it more difficult for this subset of professionals to expand when what we need so urgently is to grow. For these reasons, I implore the support of Bill 356-37. Please remedy this error immediately so that anyone who has chosen to dedicate their lives and their careers to serve people with mental health issues can do so without any unnecessary delay. I would also like to add a few comments pertaining to how we got to where we are today with this error within Public Law 36-138. Several members of the current Allied Health Board expressed that they were not aware of this error until very recently, and other members were aware of it but claimed that they are at a loss for how the omission of LPCs as eligible supervisors came to be law. From my observation, after viewing the recording at their last meeting, it was unanimous that the board would like to correct this error, so much so that they proposed to draft a resolution that will allow for LPCs to be eligible to provide clinical supervision to LPC applicants. While this proposed resolution of the board's rules and regulations sounds like a good start, I am concerned that it is merely a quick fix, and it is obviously not designed to be a long-term and permanent solution. I am also concerned that the Allied Health Board reports that they have been unable to receive guidance from their legal counsel on this matter despite numerous attempts to seek clarification since learning of the omission of LPCs as clinical supervisors. I understand that this current bill in discussion is not intended to address the matter regarding legal counsel. However, if the board's inability to resolve the issue or understand how the error came to be in the first place is impacted by challenges related to their legal counsel, I would like to know if there is a way that such errors can be avoided in the future, or if there are more effective methods to ensure that the board is able to get the guidance they claim they need in a more timely manner. I appreciate that the Health Professional Licensing Office has been able to provide useful memorandums via email of various updates relevant to our licenses. We have been informed of changes to the application process, requirements for continuing education hours, and changes on how license cards and certificates will be transmitted. But a change in the ineligibility of LPCs as clinical supervisors was not announced, not by email, not on their website, no memorandum of it anywhere. The only way that I learned of it was when my supervisee informed me just this past August that she was told by the person receiving her documents at the front desk of the Health Professional Licensing Office that I'm not an eligible supervisor. My supervisee began submitting documents toward her application packet since April of 2024 and was never given any indication that four months later, her application would be rejected because of the rules adopted into law in December 2022. As of yesterday, September 30, the application form available on the Allied Health Board's website, the form used by my supervisee, which was later deemed ineligible, states that the applicant must meet a minimum of 3,000 hours of documented client service, postgraduate experience under the supervision of a licensed professional counselor, clinical psychologist, or psychiatrist. You can just imagine the confusion and frustration one is faced with when the forms and guidelines provided to licensed applicants are the very ones being deemed invalid. Again, I understand that these additional comments are not immediately related to the bill being heard today. I'm submitting them as part of my testimony because I believe it may be part of a larger issue. I would like to see the LPC omission error to be fixed immediately, and I believe that Bill 356-37's amendment will rectify that issue. If this esteemed body can help to create long-term solutions to ensure that our HPLO and Allied Health Board can continue to effectively license and maintain our mental health professionals, our island will certainly have more of the mental health resources that they need, without a doubt. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much, Jamela Santos. I would like to recognize Senator Joanne Brown, Vice Chair of the Committee on Health. Thank you for being here, Senator. We'll proceed now with, I have Andrea Santos.
Good morning. My name is Andrea Santos, and I am one of the individuals seeking to become a licensed professional counselor and facing significant barriers as written about in Bill 356-37. Thank you, Madam Speaker, for responding to the plea of our mental health community with this bill, and thank you, Senator Tukui and Senator Brown, for giving your time and using your influence to remedy this concern. To be clear, my interest in the passing of this bill is personal. I have pled the same case to the Guam Board of Allied Health Examiners after my application for licensure was denied as a removal of LPCs as qualified supervisors in Public Law Number 36-38 rendered the most significant portion of my hours void. While I want to realize my calling as a mental health professional, this calling is sourced in something far more expansive and consequential than any single person. I've collected some of these statistical snapshots for us to consider. I am sure as members of this committee, you know them well, but bringing these numbers to the foreground is essential as we consider what might occur if this bill is not passed. Guam's Guam's 2021 suicide rate was 21.2 per 100,000. This is markedly higher than the U.S., and when positioned against World Health Organization data, Guam would rank 12th out of 194 countries in suicide mortality. Guam has the second highest number of rate per capita in the U.S. In 2023, CPS received over 1,500 referrals for child abuse neglect involving over 2,200 children. In 2021, 10% of our adults reported illicit drug use other than marijuana. Per the Guam State Epidemiological Report of 2021, 1/3 of Guam adults report mental health symptoms. Guam is in a mental health crisis, and the direness of our situation will only be compounded if this bill is not passed. There are 116 distinct licensed people on Guam. 54 hold the single license of LPCs. This means 46% of our licensed mental health professionals on Guam have been rendered impotent by Public Law Number 36-138, as LPCs can no longer foster new clinicians and help grow our profession. What is more, and if my history taking is correct, previous to 2013, at the master's level, Guam only licensed LPCs. The present law requires that we lose access to and the benefit of our most enduring professional group. The number of remaining mental health professionals cannot sustain us. It must be understood that if the present law stands, the pipeline for new mental health professionals will continue to narrow, and the available supports to our community will inevitably dwindle. The long-term ramifications cannot be overlooked. The problems that ail our communities now will only grow exponentially without sufficient mental health supports. It does not need to be this way. In other jurisdictions, California, Oregon, Arizona, Alaska, Colorado, to name a few, LPCs are allowed to supervise not only other aspiring LPCs, but aspiring MFTs, licensed mental health counselors, and other professional counselors. I have been in direct correspondence with the American Counseling Association, and they have expressed their support and concern for what is occurring on Guam. Dr. Lynn Lind, the Chief of Professional Practice at the ACA, wrote me and made emphatic that the ACA does not believe that LPCs are less qualified than any other master's-level mental health professionals, and that they consider professional counselors simply an umbrella term. When I spoke with the Guam Board of Allied Health Examiners at their board meeting in September, members responded to the removal of LPCs this way, and I quote, "It's unfortunate the error made in the law." Quote, "I have to say that I am also perplexed by the elimination of LPCs to qualified supervisors. That was done totally without my knowledge." Quote, "I'm going to tell you that there was no rationale for LPCs to be removed. It was removed, I'm going to tell you, it was very unfortunate." Quote, "The truth is, it does hurt our community." I want to echo this committee member's words. The truth is, removing LPCs from qualified supervisors does hurt our community. If we can trust the words of the Guam Board of Allied Health Examiners, then there was no rational basis for the removal of LPCs as qualified supervisors, and the omission was an error. If we trust this, and I believe we should, then it is right that this bill be made retroactive and thus effective on the date of the previous enactment, specifically December 2022. To be clear, I'm requesting that Section 3 effective date be amended to December 2022 to rectify the egregious error to our community. I was once a consumer of mental health services, and I can say without hyperbole that they saved my life. It is unconscionable if we make it more difficult for our brothers and sisters of this island to access care. This legislature has the awesome ability and substantial responsibility to be stewards of our community. I hope that my plea and the presence in statements of my colleagues today will make itself evident that there is no legitimate government interest, no benefit to our community, or no leveling up in our field that will come, that will result by excluding LPCs. And I hope that you will use your influence to amend Bill Number 356-37 to be retroactive and commit to its passing in the legislature. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Santos. Jolene Baza?
Good morning, Madam Speaker. I'm in support of the Act to amend the Guam Board of Allied Health Examiners Administrative Rules and Regulations in order to include licensed professional counselors, LPCs, as clinical supervisors, so that it is consistent with the qualifications of clinical supervisors outlined in Bill Number 356-37. My name is Jolene Agan Baza. I'm a behavioral health provider at Blue Ocean Medical Group, also known as IHP, and I am the Director of Blue Ocean Behavioral Health. I've been a licensed provider for almost five years now, specializing in trauma treatment and serving as a clinical expert for children involved in child protection matters. I've worked with our chronically traumatized children and adolescents for almost 15 years as a social worker prior to my licensure. I sincerely appreciate the opportunity to share my perspective on this issue, which has significant implications for the community and those seeking licensure. This amendment is essential for expanding the pool of qualified supervisors and ensuring the continued development of behavioral health professionals in Guam. As an LPC myself, I have experienced firsthand the challenges faced by LPCs and our graduate student interns in seeking supervision. In my career, I've been fortunate enough to be mentored by highly respected behavioral health leaders in our community, all of which have either retired or have begun to transition into retirement. These mentors taught me the importance of integrating local knowledge into clinical practice, as it is deeply rooted in cultural understanding and community values. Passing down this knowledge is not only essential for achieving the best clinical outcomes, but it also honors the traditions and the wisdom of our people, ensuring that we provide care in ways that resonate with their experiences and their needs. Equally important, my mentors modeled the value of taking a larger systemic approach by working in tandem with other medical providers and government agencies. This interagency collaboration, particularly with Child Protective Services, Guam Behavioral Health and Wellness Center, the Superior Court of Guam, was central to providing best outcomes and care for our most vulnerable population, especially children involved in child protection matters. By sharing this knowledge and fostering collaboration across systems, we improve outcomes for our patients and are able to identify and address larger systemic barriers. As the Director of Blue Ocean Behavioral Health, I am committed to continuing this legacy of mentorship and collaboration, in addition to developing procedures to establish, to ensure that we uphold the legal requirements and the ethical standards of our field. Currently, we supervise six graduate interns and have about three to four in our onboarding process. Without this amendment, these interns would need to leave after graduation to seek supervision elsewhere. And this would definitely disrupt the continuity of care and hinder their ability to gain essential experience with complex cases that are mostly seen over time. It also limits the opportunity to pass down the culturally grounded knowledge that is still vital to our work. Despite being the largest group of behavioral health providers in the private sector, we still face overwhelming demand for services, and this is even without being able to serve Medicaid patients due to LPC credentialing limitations. Amending the regulations to include LPCs as clinical supervisors would help address this need while ensuring the continuity of culturally responsive and compassionate care. Furthermore, I would like to highlight that the University of Guam's programs in clinical psychology and counseling prepare students equally for the LPC licensure. Unfortunately, many qualified professionals face additional hurdles when pursuing licenses such as LMHC and MFT due to their coursework or pregraduate hour requirements that may not have been planned during their studies. In conclusion, I respectfully urge the committee to approve this amendment. By doing so, we can reduce barriers to licensure and ensure the continuation of local knowledge that is essential to the well-being of our island community. Thank you for your time and consideration.
Thank you, Ms. Jolene Agan Baza. Can you just tell me what LMHC and MFT are?
Licensed Mental Health Counselor
Okay.
And Marriage and Family Therapist.
All right. I'd like to recognize Senator Chris Barnett. Mrs. Massey, Senator, for being present. All right. Nadine Sepeda. Is there anyone else who would like to testify? All right, if not, Nadine.
Good morning, Madam Chair, to Senator Taitiwi and Senator Chris Barnett. My name is Nadine Sepeda. I currently sit as a member representing licensed marriage family therapist with the Guam Allied Health Board of Examiners. I didn't come here today prepared. I actually had to check with my boss if I could come down, that's one, and I had a training. But I know how important this issue is with our community. Being in mental health for 24 years, I've worked with everyone here at all different capacities. I know them professionally and personally. I was dumbfounded because I knew when we went through the public hearing. Let me take a step back. I want to put things in context because I can recall everything. I was part of this whole process. It used to be individual marriage family therapist. I, at the time, was the Vice Chair of Association of Marriage Family Therapy. With that being said, a lot of people coming back to Guam and were relocating to the States and said, "We don't meet the standards. It's 1,500 hours." We had somebody that did research for 10 years, because our people do deserve to go back if they decide to relocate and have the same credentials. We worked really hard. We lobbied, and we got it passed. That was all clumped together, because in the States and the mainland, the standards were very specific. LPC, to understand, is a general practitioner. Then you have specialty, just like anything in a doctor. You have family practice, then you go into orthopedics or neurosurgeon. With that being said, LMHC is very focused on diagnostic and treatment planning. LMFT?
Sorry, when you use the acronyms, can you just, if you don't mind?
Absolutely. So Licensed Marriage, Licensed Mental Health Counselor is actually very focused on treatment planning and diagnostic. That's really where ours has to be focused on. Then when you go into Licensed Marriage Family Therapist, that's focused on triangular couples, group, and so forth. So it's very into the systems, very, very specific in their philosophy. So with that being said, we did three different licensure, but the way the law was written, because the way IMFT had decided to go, everyone was going to be grandfathered in to Licensed Professional Counselor. Again, that's general practitioner. With that, required not 1,500 hours anymore, it required 3,000, which is the standard in most states. With that 3,000, 1,500 hours, and all three licensures required it had to be directly working with patients and clients. With the specialty, you had to focus on those two different areas. Diagnostic and treatment planning for Licensed Mental Health Counselor. Licensed Mental Health Family Therapy is focused on couples, systems, and groups. Not to say that, and in some states, and by the way, I kind of want to give this in context historically, we moved there. We wanted to then say, because, as you may know, we are getting more complaints in the board specifically for therapy, and rightfully so. People should know that anyone is held accountable and go through the board so then we can look at it, were they in violation? That's why we need regulation. I was perplexed to say, I know I was, we worked every week at the time with the AG. And what happened? We got good guidance. Every week, when the law passed, I know, and I said this because I helped write that part, LPC was removed, it was omitted. Rightfully so, we do need people to supervise, but we also need people who are qualified. I sit with these ladies, and I know who are qualified. We are having problems. Part of the things that we're seeing is when people come in, they are not telling the truth. They have issues in their back, whether it's in a different state or even here. Guam is small, and you know who actually, okay, this is what's been said. I encourage people, if you're not happy with me, go and complain about me. Please, you have a right, and I need to be answerable to that. So I just want to say I am in support of putting LPC back, definitely. But I also need to say, we need to put some standards on clinical supervision. I just came from a regulatory board by the MBCC, and the truth is, there are so many complaints in every state, just in any licensure, how supervision is actually a big issue. It was a whole day on supervision, that people are actually having their parents, their mothers supervising their son. You would think common sense, that would be unethical. That's unethical. But apparently, if it's not written, people make poor judgment. And so I'm going to say, I do want LPCs back on, for sure. But in any of all, again, on all three licensure, we need a standard, and then who can provide clinical supervision? We currently set only five years in the state of Guam to be here, but clearly going, I came back with a lot of information that we need more than just five years. I know that when I got licensed, I was actually scared to supervise. I was a supervisor administratively, but I was also seeking clinical supervision outside of Guam Behavioral Health. I'm saying this because truly, there is a mental health crisis. I'm currently employed with GDOE, and there's so many. Andrea Santos is also employed, and we can contest right now that there's so many students who need mental health, who can benefit. And unfortunately, because access to care, they don't have it. They have problems with transportation. Even to get a PPD, they can't even get it, and it's required by the law to go and get that. That is the fact in the community we're living in. So I'm going to say this, I'm for it, but we also met collaboratively with Dr. Coopernerz, who has experience and is an LPC, but he's also an LM licensed professional counselor and also a licensed mental health counselor in the state of California, I'm sorry, Seattle, Washington. He decided to come home and serve his community, and we met because his department is mostly impacted. And we met with Mrs. Melissa Chartliff, who is the Client Services Administrator. And we talked, and in fact, he drafted some information based on stuff that he's familiar with, and we just kind of made some changes with all parties that are impacted. So I'm definitely for getting LPC back into this bill, getting it passed, but I'm also trying to protect our community, because people sometimes think they're ready, and they're not, and they really shouldn't need a standard. And I could say this, that people, I've worked with these people. I'm saying, what about the others that come in? I'm telling you, we get referrals from off-island. Why do you think in our law, meaning the ones for licensed professional counselor, licensed mental health counselor, and licensed marriage family therapist? Just for the record, I have all three licensure, but I'm also licensed in California. And the truth is, I feel like if I'm being held to that standard in California, why don't our people deserve the best? I know how hard it was to even get a supervisor who was a licensed MFT after seven years, because that was the requirement, and I had to take classes. I was very fortunate to sit as a board member in the national level for the American Association Regulatory Board for Marriage Family Therapy, and I did that for four years. Regulatory Board for Marriage Family Therapy, and I did that for four years. Now I'm part of the regulatory, and I'm learning so much. So when I say this, in good heart, we do need to pass this, but we also need to lay down some standards for supervisors. For the people that are in between, it's unfortunate, let's get it through. LPC, we should get part of that. That's why I'm in support of it. But as we move forward, we really need to put standards and hold supervisors accountable in meeting the basic standards. And that will conclude my, again, I didn't come here with a written proposal. I want to thank you again for taking this time out, but it's very important that we get this right and we do it right. Thank you.
Sis Massey. All right. Anyone else who wants to testify? All right, if not, then we're going to take questions from the panel, if you don't mind. So for Nadine Sepeda, so Dr. Mayming Balhadia had proposed some additional standards. I'm asking my staff to pass that out to everybody. And my question to her was, the way this is written, this would apply to all of the categories. Clinical psychologists, Licensed Professional Counselors, Licensed Mental Health Counselor, Marriage Family Therapists, and if this bill passes, Licensed Professional Counselors. But I think, Dr. Mayming, your answer was that this should only apply to LPCs versus everybody. And this is just, I guess, in line with your recommendation that there should be standards for supervision, right? And so I don't think anybody would have any objection to that, especially the ones that you've pointed out, that, you know, blood relatives, how you're going to supervise, things like that. So if these are applicable to everyone, I don't see a problem with it. But if it's only LPCs that need supervision standards versus everybody else doesn't need supervision standards, I guess I would have questions about that. But what I'm going to do with these supervision standards is just suggest that the board act immediately. If you've got standards that you want to implement, you do your rules and regs that, you know, you just do another round of rules and regs implementation for the standards for supervision. And otherwise, the law right now, I guess, you know, you're going to have to be consistent.
I'm sorry, Madam Chair, if I may. This is what puzzles me, though. We have three public hearings.
For what?
For the bill that passed in December 20, right.
Yes.
The one that passed in December 2022. I know this because I have staff who are licensed under me, and they were like, oh, the email. I said, "I really think you guys should go and hear it." Because although I worked on it, you may have something completely different, and we welcome that.
Sure.
And I'm going to tell you, none of them went. But boy, when the LPC, I am the one that brought it to the forefront when I saw it. And I actually spoke to my friends. I said, "I think we're going to have some problems because I don't know why Licensed Professional Counselor was omitted." And this was some months back, and they were like, and actually, it was my friends from the Association of Marriage Family Therapists, because there should be the organization. I used to be the chair there. I know how it works. And so, Madam Chair, just to also say, when I went to San Juan, Puerto Rico in June, a big stride in just, when we look at the professional, and I'm talking about even doctorate level, I didn't mention this in my testimony, but it actually talks about supervision and also that Medicaid federal money that's through Congress actually finally approved reimbursement at 100% on Licensed Marriage Family Therapists and Licensed Mental Health Counselor. Those were the two. And I asked, because I was puzzled when I was there. I came with a colleague from the board, HPLO, Rosemary, who's a secretary. I said, "Why wasn't Licensed Professional Counselors were not included?" And unfortunately, they said, "We lobbied it, it just was not included." I think that port of information is very crucial because they're all trying to keep the standards in all three specialty licensings or licensure. Because there are a lot of, I was complex with so many issues that I think was common sense, but because some of the states did not address it, it became an issue. And then, so when you were saying, should we have these standards? Fine, I think then it should be crossed because we do need to be very clear what the expectation of a clinical supervisor. I know with this documented, they recommend we do a contract. I could tell you this even before I went to regulatory. I'm not going to be accountable if someone sues me because I have to pay for insurance. I'm going to hold you accountable to the supervisee. And that's something I also included, is that I talked to Dr. Balhadia, we need to have a contract. Everyone that is supervising with the supervisee needs to have that contract. So these are things that Dr. Cooper Nurse, Melissa Charcliff, Dr. Balhadia, Vince Peretta, and myself are actually kind of pushing to be part of that because...
Who are you pushing?
Well, we're pushing that this be part of the bill to make the changes because unfortunately, even that public hearing in back in two or three years ago, Madam Chair, it took forever. I don't understand, and I'm glad they brought up something about the AG. Because when it was brought to my attention, I have asked over and over, can you tell me what you read on it? They changed every month or every two months, they changed attorneys. We couldn't even keep up with...
All right, you're losing me. I'm not understanding what you're asking for. What I'm asking you is, do you have any objection to if you need supervision to be regulated? That the board, since you're a member and the chairperson's here, that the board is going to take this up as one of their agenda items and discuss supervision regulation and what rules they want to adopt? Right? That's how we do it. We adopt rules so that everybody, it's applied across the board or wherever the rules say it's going to be applied. I am not comfortable instituting these as qualifications for all of these categories. That's how it's written, it would apply, until all these categories are aware of this and they've got some notice that this is going to be made applicable to them. Then, of course, I'm happy to help you to increase regulation of supervision if that's what you believe is needed. I have no problem with that. I'm just saying, the way to do it is the board, you take action on adopting additional rules and regs. Right?
Madam Chair, yeah, it would be the AAA, and then we would have to do the public hearing.
Yes.
Two public hearings? Okay, so probably or two?
If you've got something that you think is, well, whatever, we can discuss that. But yeah, that's the normal process. There are some times when we take rules and regs like this one, that we're doing in this bill, and we're correcting them by passing a law without the AAA process. So that's also possible, but yeah, it's just going to depend on
Okay.
Your community and whether you're going to get consensus or not.
So Madam Chair, I would go to the Association of Marriage Family Therapists, IMFT, because they're the association that actually looks at all three of them.
Okay.
My only concern is, then how do we do this if we need legal? And we don't have, even for the board? We don't have representation and it changes every month. How can you guide us to do that? Because we're not lawyers, and we really wouldn't need legal guidance in the direction we're going, even in regards to writing this into proposed law. If you guys can help me, that would be great because currently, it's changing. And that's probably my question is, then we'll do our part, we'll work with the appropriate parties, and it would be people who are impacted. We welcome, I mean, and I'll go through the appropriate association, get that feedback or have the public hearing, come back, but we still need legal guidance. And I'm not quite sure, where do we go from here? If you could please guide us, that would be great.
Sure, we've also discussed that because that was in the news, that the board is claiming they don't have legal guidance. And we did bring that up with Attorney General, and they claim that that issue's not been brought to their attention and that they, or that they are addressing it. So it really just, I can look further into that, but it's really going to be the board and Attorney General's following up with each other, you know? But my understanding is, I'm trying to remember the other board. We had in here some nominations for some other boards, and they said they did not have a problem, same licensing boards. So the HPLO, this is your HPLO office that I think needs to advocate for you. They didn't seem to have an issue with that. So that's anyways, outside of this bill, but definitely an issue. We'll continue to help you. But I'm telling you, when I call the AG and I ask him, his answer is, they're providing counsel to HPLO. All right. And HPLO claims that they've done some hiring themselves, right? So, all right, but on the bill, so now...
Speaker?
Yes?
We'll make an effort to get hold of the Attorney General.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, there's been some suggestions in the written testimony that's been submitted that I talked about earlier. Well, there's others that I didn't even mention. One is from, another one was from Dr. Alan Butler. One is from, I don't think I wrote this out, Kristiana Whitman and Emma Gillan-Mantonani. Okay, Association of Individual Marriage and Family Therapists of Guam. All right, so they're in support of the bill. Some of them, a couple of these are suggesting that we include clinical social worker as well, as if that was also not mistakenly not put it in there, but that doesn't match with the statute because social workers have their own board, their own licensing statutes. Okay, so you agree, we should not entertain anything about the social workers in this bill?
Madam Chair, absolutely. They have their own board. In fact, several social workers tried applying for LPC, they don't meet the core, so it would be very difficult, so thank you. Yes, you're correct.
All right, thank you. And then, before 2013, before the rules were changed, where LPCs were licensed, and were they allowed to supervise? Or was supervision even a requirement?
No, it was a requirement. You needed to be licensed for five years, and you can no longer take, you were not able to take seven people as supervisees at the same time. So yes, they were part of that supervision.
All right, thanks.
The standard.
And the retroactive, we are attempting to put in some language that will allow hours that have been worked to date, or, you know, since these rules were passed is what we're claiming for. So since the rules were passed till now, that those hours will be counted. Does anyone have an objection to that?
No, and I think you would have to, Madam Chair, because at least the legal read was, we can't take anything after the December 2022.
Right. Okay. So again, this was, looks to me, I'm not sure how that happened either, but the statute says one thing very clearly, you're going to be supervised by these people. The rules, when they came out in 2022, excluded one category. And so now this bill is just going to add that one category in. Okay, I'm going to open it up now for my colleague, Senator Titigui.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. And I'm going to make this quick because we have another public hearing coming up. I want to thank everyone who came and testified. Thank you for the, especially this, Mayming Balhadia, for your testimony. I just want to ask the good lady Santos, you're both Santos', right? Okay, and then yourself. Did you have a chance to look at her testimony? Do you have any issues with it? You do? With what she's recommending? Yes, please.
I may answer?
Yeah, you can.
I am not opposed to setting standards for supervisors. I think that that's a great idea and that we can set standards and we should do that. I don't support it being attached to Speaker Turlahi's bill as reinstating LPCs as clinical supervisors eligible, and then attaching all of this. I don't think that that is necessary at this time, and I think that the community needs time to prepare to...
At least testify on it and have people, another public hearing on it to
Yes.
To vet it out through the community?
Yes.
Is that what you're, is that, feel the same way, Ms. Santos?
Thank you so much for this question. I'd just like to add that I have a master's degree from San Diego State in Marriage and Family Therapy, and I'd like to say that as I was working towards licensure in California, there was not a different level of rigor for me as an MFT applicant as there is for me as an LPC applicant here on Guam. So I am concerned that this would be levied upon LPCs specifically and only. You know, I think that if we asked a general practitioner or doctor if they were less prepared than someone who had a specialty and should have greater rigor in their work, I think that most of them would buck that. And the same here. Again, I have been in communication with the American Counseling Association, and they, as a board, you know, as a large board who represents all counselors, even mental health counselors, they say that there is no difference. I do agree, though, with the benefit to our community to having specialized training for supervisors, but we have to give our supervisors opportunity to collect that learning before we implement this because, again, it would make a number, I mean, like the vast majority of our supervisors unable to supervise unless we give that time for us to build.
Okay, thank you so much. Any comments?
Yes. First would be, I'm not sure how many people that we know might have these qualifications. I don't, I'm not aware of anyone. Maybe the board might know. So they don't exist right now on the island, so we would need to first introduce it. The time to implementing it should be gradual so that the community can ready ourselves for it. I would definitely prepare myself for it and get the training that's needed because I do supervise interns. And then last...
That's good to know. I didn't realize that.
Yeah.
Can you answer that? Is there anyone that qualifies for this, Mayming or...
So we actually are looking at how APA, or even the board, MBCC, Regulatory Board, can offer that. But we, again, this is just not just Dr. Balhadia or myself, it is with Dr. Cooper Nurse. He also has people that he could identify. But again, we are working collectively with this group who've been impacted. Not to say, again, we're looking at Guam Behavior Health and the court, who employ the largest amount of therapists governmental, so we are looking at how we can provide this and get people up to par.
Okay, but the question is that there, I mean, the question was, is there anyone that fits that category? Right now, I mean, these ladies who obviously are well, you know, educated in this field, doesn't even know of anyone, so I think that we should move a little cautiously, as
And we can.
And that being said, you know, I look forward to any other questions or any additional testimonies that you have, you know, that if you forget later on, you're like, "Oh my gosh, I forgot something," you know? Please feel free, you know, to send it to the committee, the speaker, so we can move forward on this. Yes?
Yeah, if I could make one more comment. So I'm an LPC, Licensed Professional Counselor. I in no way can now qualify for an MFT because I did not prepare for it in my studies. So I would never qualify for MFT, even if I wanted to. Lastly, main difference between the other license, which is Licensed Mental Health Counselor, is two courses. I would have to just take two classes and an exam. That exam actually matched my program for the LMHC. But those are the main differences between them, and that is why I think the majority is LPC. It's just like the carryout, that thinking about the people that fall in between as we're trying to improve our standards for the island and the community, people like her and my interns that end up falling and are most affected by it and their patients.
This is great. This is good conversation. There's about, what, 116 LPCs right now? Is that right?
No, there are 116 Licensed Professionals, including everyone, clinical psychologists, MFTs. There are 54 who are only LPCs, hold a single license.
Yeah.
Yeah, so that would be a significant amount. And I'd just like to say that, you know, considering we have so many LPCs who are supervising, I have a degree in Marriage and Family Therapy, but because my supervisor's an LPC, from what I understand, I cannot apply to be a Marriage and Family Therapist here on Guam, but I do have the fundamental educational training, which is, you know, concerning. And what we're doing here is because this pocket is so large, we are going to make, I mean, the compounding effect is going to be, we are going to have fewer and fewer people who are not LPCs. And so we must consider that. I mean, like, are we going the right way? If this is what they're saying is the right way, the board, how are they going to pave a way for us? Again, I have a degree from San Diego State. I taught at San Diego State as a postgraduate lecturer. I teach at UOG. How am I not then becoming an LPC, then going to be a qualified supervisor if in all these other locations? I have been deemed credible and an expert. Thank you.
Well, thank you, no, thank you so much for even staying here. The last thing we want to do is provide any more, you know, bureaucracy or loopholes to allow you to practice on Guam. We don't want to lose you to the mainland. There's such a big exodus right now of professionals. There's such a big exodus right now of professionals leaving our island. And whatever we can do to assist them, you know, to do it correctly, of course, and safely. I stand in support of that, so. Well, thank you so much, ladies, and thank you, Madam Speaker, for the opportunity.
Situs Masih, Senator Taitikri, Senator Brown, Vice Chair.
Thank you very much, Madam Speaker, and certainly I thank you to all of you for coming here this morning and providing your testimony. I mean, there's definitely a need, as I can hear there, to ensure that we can have the process for licensed professionals in the work that you're doing of counseling. There's such a need. I mean, I don't know if we're more stressed these days in life and have more issues, all of us individually, no matter who we are, to deal with. And definitely the need for the service is there, probably. The need is greater than the professionals of you that are here to provide that service. So I'm hopeful through this dialogue and your testimony, your collective input this morning, we can come to a happy medium so that those requirements can be put in place and some of the fine things that have to be fine tuned a little further to accommodate, including the recommendation that maybe we need to gradually put these requirements in place that allows those of you that are in this field, if you need, you know, there's hours you need to put in or additional training that would give you the opportunity to work towards getting the full licensure that you need to perform your work. But I really encourage you to continue to do it because you provide a very important service. I mean, we always look at the health of the body, but sometimes we have people with perfectly healthy bodies that because of emotional issues that they may be dealing with or mental issues that they may be dealing with, you know, they struggle with it or in some cases choose to take their life as a result of it. And we hate to see that in our community. I think life is a great gift, and we want to do the best we can and help those that need it so that they can live a good quality life. So thank you for providing your testimony. And I hope through the course of this bill and the dialogue you provided, we can take things to the next level. Thank you so much. Thank you very much, Madam Speaker.
Thank you, Senator Brown. Senator Burnett?
Goodness, Situs, Madam Speaker, and thank you again to the panel. Wow, a lot of insightful testimony here and definitely learned a lot this morning. And, you know, I was upstairs watching the hearing, and I felt compelled to just come down and be in the presence of, you know, some great people who do some good things in our community. And as someone who's gone to therapy and benefited from it, I'd encourage everybody to do the same. You'd be surprised how accessible it is to so many with insurance and I think even some without. And so for me to listen to you guys as the experts kind of go deep into the weeds on what I feel are, you know, kind of like recruitment retention issues, like I said, is very insightful and it's definitely been a learning experience. And I commend the author of the bill and the committee chair for, again, doing the necessary work. That's often, you know, overlooked when we look at the big picture. So Situs Masih for your testimony, and thank you very much, Madam Speaker.
Situs Masih, Senator Burnett. One more, or a couple of questions while you're here. One of the testimony points out that the requirement for supervision or supervisors in Guam is that they have five years' experience in Guam, or licensed with a license in Guam for five years. And he questions why that has to be in Guam when we could get licensed professionals from anywhere and bring them in and supervise? Yes?
Historically, it's because people actually apply from the states. It becomes a cultural issue. They have a difficult time. Being at Guam behavioral health for 15 years, we've had so many clinical psychologists in the time of the federal management team. And our clients would complain that they didn't understand our culture. And oftentimes, our people like to tell story, and for them, it's move it along, move it along. So historically, we said you have to be licensed here to understand and improve. It's really a cultural issue that we were concerned.
And Dr. Ms. Baza also pointed out very well the significance of having that experience in Guam and with the cultural issues. All right, I just wanted to mention that. If, that's, again, if somebody wants to change that, that would have to go through the board, I say, and have that discussion. All right, but I very much appreciate all of your testimony and, more importantly, all of your work and the work that you do. Very critical, as you've all pointed out, and we have a dire need. So thank you for hanging in there, doing this type of work, wishing to come to Guam and do it, come back to Guam and do it. I really, really appreciate that. All right, with that being, that will be the end. There being no further testimony. This hearing will be adjourned and concluded. It is 10:20 a.m. Situs Masih.